Council Upia?
Present.
President, Council Net?
Present.
President, Council Walshapson? Council Chakoudas?
Present.
President, Council Stavitt?
Present.
Present. Okay, we have the interview for the Position of Treasurer/Collector.
Okay, we have the appointment here with the, for the Treasurer/Collector, and I believe Ms. Fannin is here along with CFO Mike Bertino. If you guys would like to come up and, I know this is a CFO's appointment which we are here to interview and bring out this evening to the full council for confirmation, so, welcome.
Thank you, Ms.
Very welcome, welcome. I guess we would just start with maybe some background on Ms. Fannin and sort of an introductory statement if you would, and then if the councils have questions, we have your resume already and we could ask some questions and then we would end with like a closing statement if you would. Would you like to just give a little background or summary on how we got to this point with this position?
Sure, sure, thank you.
Okay.
The position was advertised locally. We did it on a rolling basis, we selected a number of candidates to interview. We had an interview committee interview several candidates. After the interview, we checked references and come up with a unanimous recommendation and I took it to the committee, I wrote the council a letter, at least was our unanimous recommendation for the position.
And just for clarification, this is an existing position that was budgeted for the FY '20 cycle and it's a replacement of a retiring?
Exactly, we had the individual retire and they were...
Great.
He said, "We..." Do we say who, who we, besides who was...
It was myself, Drew Russo, Steve Spencer, the Controller, the Chairman Hamel, the Russo's...
How many candidates were there?
Originally, in total, two different times, we interviewed about seven people.
Great. Any other questions before we turn it over to Ms. Fannin? Alise Flores-Jones?
So, I received my bachelor's degree in Survivor, Justice and Accounting, and from there, I became an auditor with the last year's calling. I worked there for about six and a half years on many different industry streams. We specialized in low-income housing, but I also did a lot of nonprofits and grants. From there, I became the grants manager for one of those schools and have been there for six and a half years. I've enjoyed my time there, I remember a lot about federal, state, and private grants and municipal finance. And then when this position opened up, I found it was a pretty exciting way to get into the different kind of finances for the city.
Great, excellent. Any other questions from councils, from Ms. Fannin? With your background in grants, do you think that will be, lend itself to this position at times, or?
I hope so, it's given me a lot of experience with revenue coming into the city and I learned a lot about Chapter 30 lead laws and...
Utilizing some experience from the school side now moving over to the city side, you seem to be well-rounded in now all that space?
Yes.
Great, great.
What is grant manager for the city? Let's not say grant manager, what?
Grant manager.
So, it's an accounting position, so not actually writing grants?
Okay.
But the state, federal, and private grants come in, and then I read all the regulations and all the accounting compliance issues, follow them, do all the reporting, all the finances for the grants.
For the school?
For the schools, yes.
Council Stavitt?
Just gonna make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Alise Fannin? Motion been made, seconded by Council Chakoudas. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
We'll bring this recommendation out to the full council at tonight's meeting at eight o'clock, under the subcommittee reports. Thank you, good luck.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstent Council Ozy, abstent Council Chakoudas?
Present.
President, Council Kaluchi?
Present.
Present. Okay, we have public hearings for the first one. We have a letter from Chairman John Walsh. Is someone here from National Grid?
Yeah.
You wanna come up?
Yeah.
Just gonna read the letter first from Council Seer. Dear Chairman Walsh, as you're aware, there are four petitions filed by National Grid scheduled for this evening. Please be advised, for approximately two years, I have repeatedly requested National Grid to relocate a pole located at 392 Eastern Ave. I have been repeatedly assured that the pole would be relocated. However, to date, despite repeated promises, National Grid has undertaken no action to relocate this pole. I am respectfully requesting that your honorable committee table all of these petitions this evening. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, dear Ms. Seer, Council President. And the first petition is National Grid to install a joint own pole on Barrett Court and install one wooden pole, down guy anchor and a pole to a pole guy in front of 17 Barrett Court.
Motion to adjourn?
Wait, you need to open the letter. In favor, in opposition?
Okay.
Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone here in favor?
Close that.
Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? See that? Close that.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? Give us a second and then...
Oh yeah, give us a second and then... To the next one. Petition of National Grid to begin on River Street to install a conduit to sweep up Pole 28 for primary 3PH riser to feed the new apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing Road.
Anyone here speak in favor? Say your name and...
Mike Cordima from National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street. There is a new building that went up, apartments, I believe, and we need to install the conduits from a proposed pole to feed their three-phase pad mount to power up the building. It's a commercial customer for residences.
So it's apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing?
Can't we address the letter?
Yeah.
Did you see this letter?
No.
Here you go.
Best I can do is take this back. I'm familiar with this over the years, I know what he's talking about, but it's not my town. I'll take it back and address it with people in the office. The engineer's on vacation. I'll look through the records, I'll see what I can find out about this issue for this counselor.
When you, when you say it's not your town, what do you mean? It's just not your area of the city, or?
Correct, I'm here tonight because I was the next up, but the engineer, I cover Revere, Revere and Winthrop, but I'm familiar with your town, I've had it over the years.
Okay.
I'll look into this, I'll see what's holding it up, I'll go down to operations and see why it never went out of the building.
Is there people in those buildings right now you're talking about?
I'm not sure, sir. I think it's brand new, no, there wouldn't be.
So we can table it for the next, for the next meeting?
You want us to table?
Yeah, come back, you know, get some information on that.
Do you second? Do you second and?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Petition of National Grid to install one joint own pole on River Street and a pole to be used as primary 3PH riser to feed new apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing Road.
Same thing, right?
Yeah.
Same one, yeah.
Same project.
Second. Petition of National Grid to begin on Commercial Street installing six new manholes and 2,700 feet conduits and trenching to circle out Carrollon Street, Day Street, and Harding Street. Conduits will continue north crossing the Linway towards the proposed new 19th Street Linway Associates.
What is this?
I'm here representing that, that project.
Just state your name and...
My name is Dan Combs, I'm an external design engineer for National Grid. As the lead project engineer developing this design. The design starts on the Linway from the existing manhole and we're extending the duck bank system that exists on the Linway and turning it down onto some city streets and then crossing the Linway again to get to the new condo development that's being designed.
The one on Beacon?
Yeah, the Gior' Works parking lot.
Which one?
The Gior' Works parking lot.
That's not going up right now, right? There's no shovel on the ground there?
Yeah, I don't, is there some issue on that?
Did you see the letter? You're for National Grid, right?
He's outside contract.
Regarding the commercial development.
Commercial development?
Yeah. Wow, which building? Which one are you talking about?
They're all connected. This fee, this fee will bring two condo developers.
Okay. You got it, man? Send me, send me the letter that I have.
Council President.
He wants us to table, we probably built out three of them out, and this guy's doing some commercial stuff, you see? We can table this one as well?
My understanding is that the Council President's asked for everything to be tabled. He's asked for National Grid for two years to move this pole despite repeated promises that just hasn't happened. I don't know why, neither does Council President.
Alright, so a motion to adjourn?
Second.
That's how it is.
You can have that.
Thank you.
So if you could look into all that and get back to Terry to see where we're standing with that, if it can be done?
Terry?
Terry Reagan?
Terry, can I have your email?
Yep.
Please. I'll also talk to one of our reps, municipal reps.
He has been, Council President Seer has been working with Faith.
Faith.
But nothing, I think I gave you a couple of letters from him in the past.
It's funny, we come here to petition for different things for the company, but yet when we go back and we submit all our stuff, we come back and they did nothing and we're here again.
Right, I know.
It's not your house.
No.
No.
But I'd like to find out, Sawyers last month had an issue with detail payments. We go back and we find out it's a little bit of both, but they chopped us to pieces. At least you didn't do that.
No, no.
So, I'll find out what I can for you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All the best. It's very nice, it's very nice, yeah. All right. And a chair.
This fellow, right?
Oh, is that coming up on the business?
Yes.
Okay. So this is... What is this?
Over here. Yep, well, how are you?
Oh, utilities? Yeah.
I have an, yes, I have shaded that.
I did?
The letter we got in the deck and the poll on...
Grossner?
Yes, yep.
I have.
All right, so this one is the Cron Castle?
Well, at that last meeting, my understanding was that the council voted to approve all 11 sites with a condition that Cron Castle come back and prove that these sites are the best alternative and in some cases, the only alternative for to meet their needs. There were three, three polls that were pointed out by members of the public that they had concerns about. The Cron Castle, understanding through this letter, is actively looking for alternative sites for those, but they have issued a letter for the other eight that had no opposition or no one came forward to voice concern, but they are still actively, from this letter and my conversations with my brother council, they're doing everything they can to see if they could relocate the three, the three poles that were specifically identified. I believe two of the property owners are in the audience today, of two of the three, and they're not seeking any request for action on those while they're trying to work things out alternatively.
You gonna call them up and say hi? Diane, wanted to do yourself for a moment? She wasn't here at the last meeting.
Hi, I'm Angie, she has two daughters. I live at the property, it's 31 question car.
I'm very familiar.
Yes, very, yeah.
Oh yeah.
Okay. I have no specific, but you can use that H of your...
I actually have copies of them.
Okay, three.
Yeah. So if I could provide a quick update?
Sure.
If I may, so, I went and looked at each of the 11 sites, eight of them had no opposition. I think they're in the right place, I explained why in the letter. On the other three, one on Grossner, one on Garland, and one on Bonavesta. One deals with noise, I've seen your photos and how close they are to the roof deck, and another one dealt with emissions. We're gonna have to do more due diligence, we can't just, we'll move, we have to get licenses from the utility company, so we've agreed to continue looking at those, we're not asking for any action on those three. We've extended all of the so-called shot clock so we can have our opportunity to work with the city council. We're here in good faith, we will try to find solutions for those. If we can, we will prevent, present them. I have your letters, I fully understand what you're talking about.
And the gentleman back here?
And the gentleman on Grossner, I did visit the site at...
On the...
Oh, I'm sorry, on Bonavesta?
Yeah, one justice.
As I visited the site, I hear what you're saying, I can see how it's just outside.
Where does that house is elevated? End it right on the hill.
And it's, and it's generating some noise at night. Again, we're gonna look and see what we can do for the noise, whether we can move the pole, but that's just gonna take time. We've extended it to, I think, the September date. We may be back looking for more time, but we'll do nothing with those three for the present time.
Did that, did that?
Yes, thank you.
I'll give you my card.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what is motion to... Tim?
A motion to, finding that they've satisfied the condition, if you so believe, and the condition was that this is the optimal location for the eight?
For the eight, for those eight, I agree. I agree.
So, make a motion?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, aye.
All the best.
See, government and big business can work together.
We try. You all, Mr. Regent, Mike Bertino.
Is that it?
Good.
A motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thanks.
All approved, thank you. Thank you, Council.
All right.
State Plan Review Committee meeting to order, roll call please.
Council Stavitt?
Present.
President, Council Chakoudas?
Present.
President, Council Upia?
Present.
President, Terry Lamanna?
Present.
President, Mr. Donovan absent, Mr. Caudell?
Present.
Present.
Okay, thank you, everyone. First item is Essex Apothecary on 233 Western Ave for a proposed recreational cannabis dispensary, and we have Heather Hannan and her team with us tonight. Wanna step up and?
Mister Chairman, could I add before Heather starts that EDIC vetted Heather and the team, and they certainly have the experience and the financial wherewithal. We've been working with Heather for months now, so we're happy that they find a, they find a location.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caudell.
Thank you.
We're on information?
Yep.
I'm ready.
One for everyone. Thank you. And one. So Ms. Hannan had her community meeting at the Knights of Pithias a couple of weeks back, I think the meeting went well. The location is located in Ward 1, directly across the street from Ward 2. As the Ward 2 counselor, I had a couple of residents reach out to me with questions, they were answered. I probably had more correspondence in favor, so... Would you like, would you just stand up and?
Yep.
Do your thing?
Yep. My name is Heather Hannan, and I am the owner and operator of Essex Apothecary. First, let me say I'm actually very happy to be here. It's only taken me one year, one month, two days, and six hours. Please count me. We are women that want to run boutique style cannabis store. We're gonna be good corporate citizens and good neighbors. We're also gonna be dedicated to help the community at large with charity involvement, and we'll contribute to operate seamlessly with the community committed. Who we are, as I said, we're gonna be leaders, we're the standard of excellence in the growing cannabis space, we'll provide safe use, and city bylaw information with each sale, we'll also ensure customer understanding of responsible consumption. Our team, as I said, I'm Heather Hannan, the owner, CEO. I have successfully created and managed several businesses. I have a VA in management and marketing plus a minor in math and biology. It's actually resulted in changing my education to pre-med. This is a family affair, my sister's gonna be the director of operations, she has been in the cannabis space from every aspect possible since the legalization in Colorado. My dad is also my hero, he is gonna be our director of community development, he has raised millions of dollars for education and art. He's also retired vet and 100% disabled. My security guy, Mickey Whitney, I'm sorry, Harrison Whitney, you wanna talk about your accolades?
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm director of security, my name's Harrison Whitney, I have over 35 years of law enforcement experience, so I'm right at the table, we're gonna, that's basically me.
And he, and we met Mickey, just so you guys know, from, a very good friend of ours, who's Mr. Frank Pettis, who's also a big supporter of us. He's spoken on behalf of the community meeting and hopefully will speak for us at the special use permit.
Are you still working at the Sheriff's?
I am not, no, I retired, I retired a few years ago, but I, I do work, so.
Thank you.
James McMahon, our attorney, I'll let him talk about him.
James McMahon, I'm an attorney, I've been working with cannabis clients since 2014, actually started a medical program. Since then, I've helped clients of all license types get the final licensure status, hoping to bring Heather there as well. She's an extraordinarily strong candidate for this, she's got a great location, she's got a great plan for it, and what we're gonna do is take proven strategies that have worked for other facilities that are currently operating in the Commonwealth and apply these here. So it's not gonna be, even though, you know, this is Heather's shop, and her first shop, it's not gonna be a case of first impression, and it's not gonna be something that we're trying to reinvent the wheel on. We're gonna take things that have worked in other communities and apply them to Linway, but make sure that we put that angle on it that really makes them gel with the Linway community, really make sure that they are tuned to local needs.
And then this is Jenna Hong, Jenna is our girlie acting, talk about you.
I'm from Johnstone, Wales, and in the background, I currently live with the European Bookary Company for 12 years, and prior to that, I was in the actual corporation for legal seafoods as a trainer for a company of its own, so.
She's also currently operating in this...
Yeah, yeah. My biggest achievement last few years was taking presidency for Boston Greenhouse, where I still be in our current nears work once in a while.
Nice.
We also have a local marketing person, his name's Sean Lobdill, and then we have a PR person that has worked with companies like IKEA and big companies. So for our community outreach, just so you know, it's important to me, I come from a long line of educators, I'm also raising a three and a half-year-old child in Lin, she currently goes to school in Lin, so education and art, I'm from a long line of educators, a long line of artists, I'm not going to be artist, but, so we're gonna make sure that we, our community outreach has to be around those, so children, education, and art. Also, we're gonna hire local, I think this is kind of a no-brainer, I don't know why we have to say it, but we're gonna try to keep some money in Lin, so hire as much locals we can, because we feel like that's important. Okay, so everybody knows Andrew Garage, I don't know if you have a picture there, so we have a picture of your presentation is what it currently looks like now, and what it's going to look like after we get down to renovations. Our architect has done a great job with the layout and with everything, he's notorious as a no-brainer, he is for creating police stations and fire stations, he's fabulous as our architects. So also, if you look at the layout, if I can draw your picture, a couple of things there, if you look on the far left-hand side, you'll see that we're going to, for delivery, we're gonna pull the truck completely into the building and unload into the vault right there. The other thing that's nice about ours is our waiting area, which is also gonna be a local art gallery, we're gonna have only a local art inside the gallery in the waiting area. It's very, it's relatively large, I know there's a few other places that some of the concerns are the lines outside, that's because there's no waiting area. I may or may not have visited it, just to check it out.
And if I could just jump in for one second, the deliveries that Heather was referring to are incoming product deliveries, those would not be out-dap, out-of- retail-facing deliveries, so that's her incoming wholesale products that she would then be putting on the shelves and putting back out, just wanna make sure that that...
Yeah, we don't have a delivery service unless, yeah. That's another meeting. Also, parking, if you'll notice, we have 20 designated parking spots.
Fifty spots.
That's the most, I believe, that we have in Lin, and then also, I think two of them are handicap, I can't see from, I'm looking at Robert's shoulder, and then there's six employees in addition to that. Traffic, so traffic's always a concern, so we're gonna do everything that we can to help mitigate that, but what we've pointed out in our presentation, no matter what business you're gonna put in there, it's gonna create traffic. Look what happened in the newness of the Popeyes, the newness of Slime.
Heather's done a great job of coordinating with other business owners and residents in the area to address any traffic concerns they may have proactively. She's worked out ways to monitor other business lots and ensure that none of her customers are parking in those lots, and she's been, you know, in close close contact to say, if anyone does have an issue going forward with traffic, please get in touch with me, we have some great strategies on our side of if it ever does become an issue which by the time these get open and we have somebody open in Lin, we don't think we're gonna see a run on the shop, or we're hoping we don't think we're gonna see a run on the shop, and we have some good strategies to help and that doesn't become a concern.
So for the security part, the security's kind of standard, unless you want Mickey to read all of this?
I'll read it if you want.
Do you? Okay.
You want me to go now?
You guys want them to read the?
Okay.
It's up to you.
No, I think everybody has it, and they can read themselves unless...
I'm just briefly touching on... We, we obviously are gonna be in compliance with, with all the state mandates, we'll have the appropriate number of security personnel on scene at all times. Deliveries will be random, cash pickups will be random, access will be restricted to certain areas for certain employees, background checks are gonna be done while employees coming in. And basically, it's gonna be one of the best fortified buildings in, in the city of Lin.
And usually, there's two to three more cameras at these stores and there are at banks.
There'll be surveillance inside, outside.
Out everywhere.
We'll work with the architect to make sure that there isn't any light pollution so that we're not bothering the neighbors.
And the employees all go through a training program, so they have ID check verification, cash handling training, safe sales training, anti-diversion training. Each of the employees goes through that course once per year, and then as needed throughout the year, as regulations change, as the pressures are needed, so incredibly well-trained staff, an incredibly secure building, a phenomenal operator, and a phenomenal product manager.
And we will work with the Lin Police Department, consultants down on a daily basis as needed, and we'll take their recommendations ourselves.
If I could just ask a question, if by the time you open, there are not many stores open and traffic is a concern, would you be willing to go by appointment similar to what they do at...
Absolutely.
Yeah, there are some great systems that you can use to manage that online pretty effectively, so that's absolutely something we'd be happy to explore if and when that does become a concern.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Council Upia?
Thank you, Mr. Schiperson. So I was unable to make the neighborhood meeting on the 24th of June, but I was at a prior meeting for a different location, and I heard over and over again around the congestion on what would have been Western Ave for that site and the lack of parking. At this meeting, did that alleviate some of the concerns where there's a lot of parking now from the neighbors?
We did not have one, we had one person raise their hand about parking and, yeah, and then I do know that there was, I got a call, well, Rick got a call from someone that was concerned, one of the neighbors was concerned, one of the businesses was concerned with parking, and so I went and met with them, and it's actually public parking, but, you know, he said we could, I'm like, no, you can do that, if someone parks there and you need to park here, you call me, they will all serve them.
And isn't there, uh, street parking still along that strip of Western Avenue?
There is, yep.
Street parking, a few spaces in front, in many cases.
And I office over there currently, and I never have a problem with it.
Okay.
there was, I got a call, well, Rick got a call from someone that was concerned, one of the neighbors was concerned, one of the businesses was concerned with parking. And so I went and met with them. And it's actually public parking, but, you know, he said we could cover it. I'm like, no, we can do that. If someone parks there and you need to park here, you call me. They will all serve them.
And isn't there street parking still along that strip of Western Avenue?
There is.
Okay.
Street parking, a few spaces in front in many cases.
And I office over there currently and I never have a problem with it. On the street, yeah. I never do. And then in addition to that, we've had some other businesses that have reached out to us and they said, we want to lease their parking lot the 95th, although it'd be sort of a walk, but, you know, they would definitely do it.
And do you think the amount of people at this meeting mirrored what was your previous meeting? Were there a lot of folks at this meeting in June?
There was a lot of people there.
So you heard back from a lot of those constituents?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, we have worked with Heather and her team for a year now. So we're, we're in six hours.
Six and a half now, maybe.
And first of all, I think that it's great that it's in this part of the city and not, you know, in Western. So because of the six licenses that we can give out, I think it's important to kind of spread them out to the city. So I think this is a good location. It has the most parking of any that we've given out so far. They have a great security team in place. They have the experience, the financial wherewithal. I would make a motion to grant.
Okay, motion's been made. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify, is this number seven out of eight that we'd be approving right now?
This would be seven out of eight.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas? Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Lapias?
Yes.
Yes, Attorney Lamanna?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Donovan absent, Mr. Cowdell?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We had one other item on the agenda and that was for proposed location of 461 Broad Street. Those proponents have pulled their application at this time. So with no other business on the agenda?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Staubert, absent, Councilor Barton absent, Councilor Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Councilor Seer absent, Councilor Field?
Present.
Present. Start with transfer the sum of $1,360,000 from the account of workers' comp payroll to the account of statutory workers' comp payroll to fund the statutory workers' compensation fund under Chapter 40, Section 13A from FY '20 general fund appropriated amount. This fund was initially adopted in FY '19.
Let the rest of the committee.
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert absent, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Right, yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent. Transfer the sum of $100,000 from the account of unemployment expense to the account of statutory unemployment expense to fund the statutory unemployment benefits funds under Chapter 40, Section 5E from FY '20 general fund appropriated amount. This fund was initially adopted in FY '19.
This committee?
Second.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Transfer the sum of $109,500 from the account of LIN Police Department expense to the account of various statutory public safety injured on duty expense to fund the statutory public safety injured on duty medical expenses fund under Chapter 41, Section 111F from FY '20 general fund appropriated amount. This fund was initially adopted in FY '19.
The rest committee?
Motion approved.
Is that a second?
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Transfer the sum of $129,500 from the account of LIN fire expense to the accounts of various statutory public safety injured on duty expense to fund the statutory public safety injured on duty medical expenses fund under Chapter 41, Section 111F from FY '20 general fund appropriated amount. This fund was initially adopted in FY '19.
This committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Certifies available fund, the amount of $74,088.50 is allotted to the City of LIN by the Department of Public Utilities for the proceeds of the transportation network companies, Uber, Lyft funds to be used for transportation infrastructure needs. The city receives 10 cents per ride from the DPU annually for this TNC agreement.
The rest committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Certifies available fund, the amount of $794,178 is allotted to the City of LIN Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the State 911 Support and Incentive Grant.
The rest committee?
Yes, second?
Second. Roll call.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Certifies available fund, the amount of $22,500 is allotted to the City of LIN School Department by the Essex County District Attorney's Office for the FY '20 All-Sta Program Grant, which is located at the Breed Middle School.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Certifies available fund, the amount of $15,000 is allotted to the City of LIN School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FY '20 FC 405 Career and Tech Education Partnership Planning Summer 2019 Grant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Certifies available fund, the amount of $125,000 is allotted to the City of LIN Health Department by the Department of Public Health Mass Tobacco Cessation and Prevention Program. Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Emergency, Steve?
Motion approved, emergency.
Emergency. Is he a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilonette?
Yes.
Yes, Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton absent, Council Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we adjourn?
Present. Councilwoman Lapias?
Present.
Present, Council Calucci? Absent, Council Walsh?
Present.
Present, Council Field?
Present.
Present.
Okay, two items on the agenda, discussion with the Director of the Downtown LIN Cultural District regarding the approval of a public art display at the corner of Mount Vernon and Exchange Streets. And Carolyn Cole is here somewhere.
Hello? My name is Marlon Londer in the ABC. Mrs. Ann is there, the team working on this with us. I'm going to sit outside as well. Maybe we're having us just a visual.
Is that bigger print?
Bigger print? So that's part of our community engagement process. The city awarded a technical support with a metcall in the city council. It was to develop a public art infrastructure in the city going forward. So we have, you know, basically a process protocol for public art installations. We have to kind of, you know, figure it out each time. It would be something that would be installed in the city, maybe expand on it where it's needed. And it would also culminate with a public art installation at the end of this. So it's very much a community-driven process. We have advisory groups in communities all over the city. And there'll be a selection process. This is part of the community engagement aspect where we'll be taking over an area downtown and just having conversations with the community and the public to see kind of what they would like to see in their city. There's always that level of forest bias mentality in every city you go to. It's important that, you know, we respect that pride and authenticity and hear from LINers. And I think this process has been so overwhelmingly positive because of that. The MBCs have really fostered that sort of intuition with all of our community members and the public thus far. So I sent out a call, a draft call earlier. We'll be releasing, attempt to release a draft call, releasing a draft call, a call, excuse me, an RFP. And it's, it'll be nationwide, but there will be, you know, a strong encouragement for local artists to submit their design. And if they are from other areas of the country, then it will be a prerequisite that they partner their reciprocal mentorship, you know, the UZ young artists, a local program or business fabricator, you know, some sort of local partner to really make it a nice LIN-centered installation. I call it a LIN installation. Thank you. These are beautiful pictures, right? And most of them are from LIN. So that's why this will be part of the public education piece. It's so important to get the public involved and educate them on what they could have and why would we create their community. So I think just having this opportunity to work in the metro area planning council has been just transformative for downtown, for the arts and cultural district. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Great idea.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak on this?
I do want to talk.
Whenever you guys decide, we'll make it work.
And we'll be working hand in hand with DWD, a lot of park management and pivotal.
Inspection services as well, I imagine.
Yes, yes. Actually, we're putting together an evaluation committee, like some members of either this group or our committee or inspection services. Possibly DWD to be in with us very closely throughout the entire process.
Is it going to be like lighting or anything electrical?
So it's going to be whatever is available to the area. It's going to, there are going to be restrictions. There's criteria here, which I can also pass out if you'd like to see an overview of that, about what can be done. That was, that's a big part of the process of working with DWD. What is allowed in the city in terms of weight and electrical aspects, water feature, noise, whatever that is. We're going to say no to a lot of that, so don't worry. But safety is always a major concern, accessibility and the compliance, not only with the structure itself, but also in the area, you know, that it doesn't block any. It's an active intersection. It doesn't block any signs or crosswalks or impede pedestrian traffic or road traffic.
And the, yes. For the chair, do you have a projected timeline of completion on this, sir? Is this ongoing or?
Yes, yes. So as of now, the timeline, once all of this is going through, the release, the intent to release a call, and these are following strictly the guidelines of the state. That's why I'm here. 30B. And then we'll have like a web conference, I believe, to look at some final.
Coezers Conference.
Yeah, Coezers, Bitter's Conference, that's what it's called. In September, I think October will be the deadline for submissions. And then we'll be narrowing them down in terms of our evaluation committee, the panel of experts. And then the Public Arts Commission will work as final facilitators when it gets down to it. And we'll, and installation to be hopefully completed by the spring and summer of next year.
2020 somewhere.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Council Field?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, there's a lot of activity on that particular area?
Yes.
Is this a collaboration with any other groups beyond walls? Ironbound, anybody like that?
Yes, so they're all, a lot of the active members of downtown are on our advisory working groups. So what we're doing complements what they're doing vice versa, rather than competes or poses any safety risk when we're not aware of what they're doing, things like that. So yes, we've extended it to all those groups. And then we've had hosted workshops where we've invited all the rest of the groups and we're keeping everybody informed and on top of what's happening and we all get to say.
Councilwoman. Could I also suggest that we try to incorporate LIN schools and the kids, students in trying to give them feedback?
Yes, Patty Klavanski is also one of our advisors.
Fine, fine.
She's one of the most talented people in the city.
They're the future. They have good ideas, I'm sure.
Patty's a very active member in our advisory groups.
Getting it down to the kid level, though. Especially some of the secondary kids who are Otis and Grappa Gods.
Absolutely. Food projects as well, they're working with a lot of youth and so youth and power will spend a major focal point on food process.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Motion made, seconded. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Staubert?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Lapias?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci absent, Council Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Who wants to be on our committee? I'll take all of you.
Terry, you go.
Thank you all very much. Keep those if you like.
Calucci, he's not here. Appoint Calucci. Voluntar.
Calucci?
Okay, thank you. Second item is request from KIP Academy to use the Johnson Street parking lot on Saturday, July 27, 2019, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Is somebody here from KIP?
Hi, Shannon.
Hey, Shannon.
Nice to meet all of you. So this year or this summer, we are really excited. We are building a playground for KIP Academy LIN Elementary School and Middle School, which is located at 90 High Rock Street. So we're building this in collaboration with Kaboom as well as Delta. And the community is coming together and we are like, you know, designing it and building it. So we have over 200 volunteers coming in. And we can only house so many cars in our parking lot. We also don't want to overwhelm the neighborhood with street parking. So we're just looking for a nearby parking lot where we can have volunteers park the day up from 7:00 AM till 4:00 PM.
I did call Jamie Marsh to make sure that there was no events going on at City Hall, at the auditorium, that they may need the parking lot for and there's nothing going on.
Any reason why we're not approaching Ford School, which is closer for their use of their lawn?
No reason, no. I had, I had reached out to folks from ISD just about Lynn using the public schools and I hadn't heard back.
Yeah, they have this Mulyon jurisdiction.
Okay.
But that's closer.
Yeah.
More convenient. And in addition to maybe Johnson, if you have hundreds.
Right.
When you say Delta, is it the old?
Yes, so they're partnering to help us fund this playground. So we explored a bunch of different options just because we're open and we want to be flexible.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Apia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kuluchi absent, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Field?
Yes.
No other items on the agenda?
Sure.
Motion made, seconded.
Sure.
All in favor?
President.
President, Council Hogan?
Present.
President, Council Field?
Present.
President, Council Ozy?
Present.
President, Council Met?
Present.
Present. Okay, the first one is taxi operator, Moises Martinez Gillian. Moises?
Taxi operator, like?
Mr. Martinez?
Moises?
Motion table.
Motion table, second. All in favor? Opposed?
Okay, we have Julio Santana.
How you doing, Hawaii?
It's the wish of the committee.
Motion approved.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed.
All right, go to clerk's office Thursday, okay?
Thank you. Yep.
Richard Sessigl. Richard, come on up.
Hey, Richard, how you doing?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. We have a second. Second. All in favor? Opposed. Okay, Thursday on the first office.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two tabled and a review. Erica Garcia Gil. Erica, come on up.
Hawaii? Hi.
Erica was tabled from the last time.
Motion approved.
We have a second. All in favor? Opposed. All right, Thursday on the first office.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Hector Lopez. Hector, this is 92.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion approved.
We have one more after this?
Nope.
This is it?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Motion approved, second. All in favor?
Aye. All set. Thank you.
We have a new livery operator, Brian Stone. Brian?
Hey, Brian, how you doing?
Motion approved.
It's the wish of the committee, the second.
Approved. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Thursday on the first office. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have extended hour renewals. What do you want me to do? Do you want me to read them off?
Individual.
See if everyone's here are individuals?
So checking attendance, maybe.
Okay, do we have someone here from CVS Pharmacy? Okay.
How you doing? Just tell us who you are for the records, please.
Good evening. My name's Peter Lyons. I'm attorney for CVS. With me this evening, three store managers for the three locations in the city of Lynn. Alicia Perzino is over at 200 South Carmen Street, our location there. This is Alicia. Tomover Schmidt is at Eastern Avenue, and she's the store manager for that location. And Rocky Bennett is on Boston Street. I think you've met him. We're here to address any concerns that the councils may have.
So this is for the Boston Street location right now that we're discussing?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr., thank you for coming, Attorney Lyons. There was somebody, there was nobody in attendance at our June meeting. There was a motion made to deny based on past problems. We discussed those last year.
Yes.
You were here. You agreed to maintain the outside as well as the inside of the business. That has not followed through. You have not followed through on that promise. That's why the motion was made to deny by the council president. It was approved unanimously. I'm going to make a motion to open this to a public hearing at our next meeting, okay? It can stay open for the 24 hours. The license is still granted with the stipulation to open for a public hearing, so that the public can be involved in this.
Okay, okay.
A second.
You have a second on the motion? Any other discussions?
We're a public hearing.
So it's?
We're a public hearing.
Yeah, just. Clarification. What exactly are we doing here?
We're setting it down for a public hearing at our next council meeting, so that the public can be involved with the discussion of approving a 24-hour, a continued 24-hour license.
I want to make a suggestion, if I could.
It's already been advertised.
It's already been advertised.
For public hearing?
Yes, so you're just continuing it on table?
So we just have the table, or continue this right now, is already going to the public hearing?
Okay.
Okay?
So that's what it is.
So the motion would be appropriate here, if anything, would be tabled?
Table for 30 days.
Until it comes to the public hearing section of it. Unless any other discussion or any comments that we want to make here?
So, let me get this straight. So they're allowed to continue operating the hours that they have?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, I'd like to leave phone numbers of the store managers, and also leave my card. Jim Lamont and I have a pretty good working relationship, and unfortunately, there was a missing communication on the June 28th meeting. I was then notified, and the store managers say that they never received any notice, so I don't know what happened, but we're ready, willing, and able to work with you whenever you have a problem, and we'll address them as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion to table.
Motion approved.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's tabled. Thank you very much. And the next meeting is?
August 13.
August 13.
All right, thank you.
We'll send you a notice. 108 Boston Street Burger King, is someone here from Burger King? Hi.
Hawaii? Tell us who you are, so we have your record.
I'm Ron, I'm the district manager of the store.
Okay.
And I've been here for like the last five years, and I would have been at the last meeting, but I never, we never received notification. I found out that night by checking the website, that the meeting was that night.
Yes.
But we've cooperated every year.
Who's Nicole?
Nicole.
Nicole's contact number on the school?
There's no Nicole.
Okay. Manager contact number, manager?
Jess is the restaurant manager.
Can you leave your information with the clerk?
Yeah, of course.
Contact information?
Yeah, but it should go through our office, because if it went to the office, then I would be notified immediately.
Thank you. I've been to the property a number of times over the past couple of weeks. I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion on that motion?
Motion approved. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The only thing I would say is, everybody that's here for these licenses, make sure your information is updated with us, because when letters go out, whoever was last on that thing with the clerk is going to be where the letter goes. So we need you to make sure your information is updated with us here.
Do you know Alicia Masto, listed as contact person to the office?
She's not, no.
She spoke to somebody.
Do you have your telephone number, Ron, you want to get to me?
Yep, 71.
You're on camera. Did everybody pick you up? There's a lot more than just the eyes in the room, bless you, sir.
Yeah, right, so that's approved.
Well, they heard 71 already.
I appreciate it. We'll move on to the next. D I, yeah.
This is for the contact, we have her and Nicole.
Can I put my?
Sure, that would be great. Okay, we have 116 Boston Street Wendy's. Is someone here from Wendy's?
My name is Lannison. I'm the general manager of the Boston Street.
Lannison, I've been to that property location over the past couple of weeks multiple times. I'm making a motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Just make sure what I'm doing.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just make sure your information is updated with the clerk, okay?
Do I have one?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and 122 Boston Street, Boston Shell. We have, get someone here, Rob, from Boston Shell?
You from the Shell station?
Yeah, from both, actually, the Boston Street Shell and then Linway Shell.
Okay, we can take them both together, Boston Street Shell.
What's your name?
Hi, my name is George Elwood.
James Mitchell? Okay, where do you do that?
I'm the district manager.
Okay, all right.
So, Boston Street Shell, Linway Shell.
Both, right.
We would take them both separately. Okay, Boston Street Shell, I've been to multiple times over the past couple of weeks, the same litter is in the gutter, okay? It goes for all businesses all throughout the city. It needs to be cleaned up. I'm making a motion for a 30, 60, 90 on that Boston Street location.
I'll second that. You have a second. Any discussion? All right, so 30, 60, 90 means you're going to have to come back in 30 days.
Okay.
You're going to see us again, and if the issues aren't taken care of, they have the opportunity to remove the license, Rob, and extend the notice, okay?
Okay.
So if it's been done, everything goes good 30, 60, 90 days, then you'll be able to be all set and we'll be good, but that'd be right before 50 days, okay?
Okay.
And you'll come back in 60, and you're going to be back in 10.
Okay, so just clean the, clean the dials.
Clean it up, make sure you maintain on the outside.
So that's going, that's going to go both for Linway?
No, Linway motion approved.
Motion approved for Linway.
So we have to separate, we have to vote.
Second that. Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then the one that's more on Boston Street?
Boston Street, 30, 60, 90 on the Boston Street. Linway's fine.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
124 Broad Street Taco Bell?
We have, you have the date information.
How are you?
Valentin.
You referred to us, district manager, and Valentin Haskins, general manager.
Okay, Valentin, we spoke before, okay? I spoke to Valentin before the meeting. He made me aware, Councilor Shakuta's aware, that they're in a transition period with their landscaping company. He's promised that they're going to work on that, okay? So with that communication, same recommendation that we set forth with Shell, your next door neighbor, 30, 60, 90 on that recommendation.
Second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Motion approved. Seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, all right, 30, 60, 90, you're going to be 30 days, 60 days. We're going to review, we'll be driving by, okay? All right.
124 Broad Street, George's Roast Beef?
Yes. How you doing? Good. You're the owner?
Stephrola. Okay, just make sure we have the information correct.
Yep.
The only concern I saw was, can you, the milk crates that are on the sidewalk kind of poses a dangerous situation for your business. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. We have 512 Chestnut Street, Lynnville? Yep.
Thank you. Hawaii? What's your name? Passam.
Passam, we have the information.
All right.
I think the property looks great. Been by multiple times over the past couple of weeks, different times a day. Motion approved.
Second, any discussion? Approved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
668 Chestnut Street? Yep. Couple of farms?
How you doing?
Sean.
Sean, Sean. Okay, great. Any discussion?
Again, I've been by the location around the corner. Looks good. Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Your name, thanks.
We have 122 Liberty Street Speedway. We have Cindy here.
How you doing? What's your name? Kyle. K H A.
Yep.
L I O K H A.
Okay, yep.
Again, I've been by the location multiple times over the past two weeks. Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed? All right, you're all set. Good job.
Number three, Linfield Street, 711. Master? Master?
No, I'm Rashim Malik. This is Mazir.
Mazir.
And I'm one of the attorneys representing that.
Okay, all right.
Are you representatives, are you both 711s or just the one?
Uh, one.
Okay, we'll do the Boston, we'll do the Linfield Street one first then, so I don't get anybody confused.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion approved.
Okay.
Second. Second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and you want to take the 50 Western Ave, 711?
Did we already do the Wendy's? Yeah.
Did you say?
We can do the Wendy's. Just do the Wendy's.
Do the Wendy's, okay. 377 Linway, Wendy's?
Yep. Who are you doing?
Julio?
That's correct information. I've been to the location multiple times over the past two weeks. It looked good. Keep up what you're doing. Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
525 Linway, the Gulf Station, Elias?
Elias.
Hey, Elias.
How you doing? How are you? Good, good.
Elias, you got to clean it up out there.
Okay.
Okay? You got neighbors that are cleaning up their property, you're not. Okay, whoever's in charge of your property, make a motion for a 30, 60, 90 on the Gulf on the corner of Linway and Commercial.
Second. Second that. All right, any discussion? All right. All in favor? Opposed? All right, 30, 60, 90, you're going to be back in 30 days, you're going to be back in 60 days, you're going to be back in 10 days, okay? Make sure it's all good and all set and we're good out there. Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are out of spirit of information. 567 Linway McDonald's.
How you doing?
Tim or Kathy?
Ah, no, Todd, or Rashim.
You're Todd?
Yeah.
Todd, okay. Are you the manager, Todd?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know Tim and Kathy? Okay.
I've been to the Linway multiple times, different times a day. Impeccable over there. Thank you. Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? All right.
Okay. 16 Market Square, Lynn House of Roast Beef. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Elizabeth. We have your information. I've been by. You have a barrel up front that's marked Lynn House of Roast Beef right on it. Do you maintain that barrel yourself, or does the city maintain it?
No.
You do? Okay, all right, thank you for doing that. Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Thanks.
17 Market Square, People's Choice. We have Freddie?
Hi, yes.
Hi, Freddie.
Looks good out front. I've been by multiple times, right across the street from Lynn House, so motion approved.
Second. Second. All in favor? Opposed? All right.
Okay, 50 Western Ave, the 711. And we have Asra?
Asra.
Asra.
Asra, who maintains that parking lot? Because it's not just you in that strip mall, so there's a number of businesses in that strip mall there.
I take care of my park.
I know.
And you always take care of that park.
Can we have the information of who the landlord for that property is? Because they need to do something about the litter. Okay, multiple times, you know? And you're right next to the pond.
Yes.
You're right next to the pond, so there's a lot of litter in that parking lot, and it's not just you, there's a Dunkin' Donuts there, there's a liquor store, there's other businesses in that strip mall, so I'm going to make a motion to approve, but we do need the information on the property owner. Okay, thank you.
Second, all in favor? Opposed, all right.
And 969 Western Ave AL Prime, we have Blanca?
How you doing, all right?
No.
No. Oh, Blanca's a manager, okay.
I went by today, I've been by multiple times, I've been by multiple other AL Primes. You have a broom outside, I've seen people outside cleaning during the day and at night, what you're doing, everybody in the city should be doing, motion approved.
Second, all in favor? All right.
Okay, moving on to our new flammable license for 10 Heat's Court Unit 1112 Northeast Oil Delivery, was tabled from the last meeting?
How you doing?
All right.
You guys just give your names and records here?
Okay, Northeast Oil, they're going to only use unit 11 for Northeast Oil for storage of the trucks.
Not 12?
No, 12 is not going to be used for the oil trucks. So they're going to have to go to see the fire department after we approve them today to get their next license, to get the sticker put back on their truck. We're going to need a stipulation that the trucks are to be parked inside the building at nighttime. And they have to keep the trucks in the building at nighttime and then that should be sufficient.
That's a motion?
This is Chief Allen.
Yes.
Is that zone for storage oil in that area?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, it is, I know it's a flammable license, yes.
The building is on?
Yes. Yeah, because there's other auto repairs and auto bodies in that building, 10 Heat's Court.
I don't know this to be, but my understanding, that's the fire department that has to deal with the flammable storage issue for whether it's allowed or not. What's being approved here right now is going to be a flammable license, just like any truck mechanic shop or a place that would do, you know, repair work.
They're holding a truck full of oil on?
Yeah. My understanding that it's just up to the fire department.
Yep.
So we'll approve them on our end and then they have to get their second approval to the fire department.
So it will not be for unit 12?
It'll only be for unit 11, okay.
Is it something, I mean, do you want to, I don't know what the total rules are on that particular building there, is it something with the stipulation from the fire department?
Yes, definitely a stipulation from the fire department.
So we'll do it, we'll make the motion to approve with the stipulation that it's approved by the fire department, satisfies whether it's available for food storage, okay? That's a second?
I'm sorry, it should have, sorry, then, so we don't take it in until it's approved by the fire department, so.
Okay.
It was approved?
So it was approved.
All right, so we'll scratch that stipulation?
Storage for two oil trucks and he just put unit 11, so he was right, told them that, right? That was Lieutenant Israel Gazzano.
Yes, so it's going to prove by the, so the motion doesn't need that, so make the motion, we have a second?
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, all set. Thank you.
We have a new, in new location for 892 Washington Street Edna's Auto Body, formerly was at 1071 Western Ave, now moved to 892 Washington Street. Come on up.
Questions, comments?
Just this Washington Street. Yep.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, we have a second, all in favor? Opposed, all right, all set, thank you.
We have a temp and a review for 129 Commercial Street Ernesto's Auto Repair, we had temporary license granted on June 11th.
Yeah, we've been on review of Ernesto's Auto Repair for a little while, us in the parking department and the fire department have been out there and they've made a lot of improvements to the area, cleaning up the area, and looks like we're going to make a motion to approve.
Second, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, all right, you're all set.
Thank you. So when would he be able to? Tomorrow?
Auto Repair, flammable license temporary and review, 10 Heat's Court Unit 4 Walley's Auto, hi, how you doing?
Hi.
Hawaii?
He has a 30-day review.
It's a 30-day review? Discussion on?
Okay, I've been by there a couple of times on Sunday, your shop has been closed, so that you're doing well on that there, there has been minor, a couple conformed calls, well just that you are lingering open a little longer than you're supposed to be during the week. So you have to abide by your rules, because the residents in that neighborhood are very aware of the situation with that building, so you're going to have to close on time and just make sure you do that before you come back for your next 30-day review, because if not, we're going to have to take action on you.
But I can close them before, I just want you guys to not to make garages.
No, I've been by the place, like I said, Sunday, you're doing a great job, that whole area looks clean, and also the parking on River Street behind the unit, we can't have any of that parking right there either.
No parts behind.
All right, the little side street there, right next to Heat's Court. All right, so I'm just making it aware, so you understand, close on time during the week, you're doing a good job on Sunday, and we'll keep it going.
We have 60s, you going to come back? All right, so motion made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have our renewals and reviews on these three, 371 Summer Street Express Auto and Time Repair? These are the ones you wanted to review?
Yes, Express Auto has been closed for two months now, we had a bunch of issues over there, they have taken care of a lot of the issues, the building owner is here, along with the shop owner, with speaking with the building owner and the head of the parking department, we've decided that we're going to let them reopen, but with the same thing with a 30, 60, 90 on review and make sure that all their licenses have to be up to date. So if the parking department and the ISD come back through again in this 30, 60, 90 day review, your business will be closed, because you had a lot of issues that you were dealing with when the task force came by, like licensing and painting of cars and things like that there, so definitely on the site, the building is here, if you want to say a couple of words, some of the things you're going to do to the site itself with the...
So we are just having a line to paint there on Friday, every tenant, everybody's there, gets three parking spots, it's not going to be filled like it's recently, there's no parking signs can be put up, I drive by there six in the morning to work, I've explained to everybody here that if I drive by and there's a car parked, it's not supposed to be, G and J will take their car. We cleaned up the backyard, trying to do, you know, the best we can.
Absolutely, I have to tell you, I've been by the site, the site looks amazing, the other two businesses, Diana's Auto Repair and P and P Perutire has done an outstanding job, I went over there with Perutire and he's doing an amazing job, cleaned up his whole property, I think, you know, so everyone's working together and working with the parking department and ISD also.
Can I just make one, just a suggestion, is that a lot of these are all automotive shops and so, 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 when you guys, I know a lot of the tow truck drivers, like I know these targets, you know, Smash Shop or whatever it could be, you need to make them aware, you're not allowed to have excellent parking, I understand too, that at nighttime, someone comes and brings a car, you're prepared, you don't even know it's coming, but I know that's usually the same people that are at those locations making the drops with those trucks, you might want to reach out to them and just say, listen, although I have a spot open at night, so if someone's car needs to be repaired by morning and they drop it out at night, that's where it ends up, because otherwise, you're going to end up in the same process, they're going to say, well, tow truck driver, so I think we should be trying to make some calls, so I'd love to know.
One more thing, Jake, I have had some complaints from the surrounding neighborhoods on Warren Street, from George Street, that they're parking customer cars over there and you're taking up the residents' parking spot, so we're also going to put a stipulation that no parking on the surrounding community streets, because now the neighbors are getting a little upset that they can't park their own cars there, because they're saying that people from these buildings are parking their cars there, or parking their customers' cars there and then walking over there, and a couple of them have said they followed too, so, so I just want to make that a stipulation too, that we respect the neighborhood and respect the off streets too, because we want to take care of those residents too, so.
So that's a 30, 60, 90 on that?
Yes.
Can we, can we?